Right, well, good morning everyone. Welcome to day five of stage three of the examination. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Good. We all know the score. Mobile's too off or silent. Just to note, I think today's still being recorded and livestreamed, isn't it? Yeah, okay. And Louise, can you tell us about the fire alarms?
Okay. Two exits, one at the far end as well, and one behind me. If you go out of either door and go straight ahead into the courtyard, then turn right, and the assembly point is in the street outside the church. I think you've all been here before, so you know where the coffee is and teas and where the crackers are. So, and there's no practice fire alarm today, so once again, if it goes off, it's for real. And I think that that's all I need to tell you.
Okay, thank you. This morning, we're looking at four strategic allocations: Napier Park, High Town, Creative Quarter and Marsh Farm. So I'll just take those in order and work through my matters, issues and questions. I'll just mention the weather forecast that's coming, where Luton seems to be on the edge of the snowy deluge for the south east. I think Louise may have mentioned it, that if we finish the morning early, I'm content to take a reasonable break, but then carry on with the afternoon session. That's a little dependent on Capital Louise being able to contact Capital and Regional. But that way, you know, it hopefully allows, if we can do that, that will allow people to get off a bit earlier.
Yeah.
So that sounds eminently sensible to us.
Yeah, you're happy with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, good. Well, we'll see if we can do that. If we can, we'll do it. Right, so turning then to Napier Park. My first question was really about whether the mix of uses on the site was appropriate. Just let me open up Policy LP eight. I suppose my question to the council is, the policy sets up some quite specific quantities and quite a degree of precision about the uses that are regarded as acceptable. I suppose my question is, how flexible or prescriptive is it intended to be? Does it? And is it affected by the recent planning permissions? And I think maybe there was another, was there a decision last night on the second application, wasn't there?
There was, yes. And that was approved.
And that was approved. And you were going to do me, I think, a summary of what had been approved, weren't you? Is that right?
I can read that out?
Yeah, that would be useful.
Or at least I can read out the extent of the scheme. So last night, the planning application number was sixteen forward slash double zero nine double zero forward slash F U L E I A. And the volume of development now is for 685 flats, 13 retail units providing a mix of A1 to A5 users. And that's got a gross internal area of 4,600 square metres. It also includes a gym with a gross internal area of 1,018 square metres, a medical centre with a gross internal area of 4,600 square metres, a hotel of 209 bedrooms, along with our complimentary banqueting and conference facility and associated parking and public area.
Okay. And I think, are you able to tell me there's another permission, isn't there?
There was, and that was approved earlier on in the year, but after we provided our position statement. And that application is sixteen forward slash zero one three four zero.
Those, sorry, just to say, do those two permissions overlap, or are they for separate areas of the site?
They are for separate areas of the site. So the latest one that was decided yesterday was for an area called Napier Gateway, which is in the south east corner of the site.
Okay.
And the previous one earlier in the year was for the residential area on the western side of the site, and also on the plateau. And that's previous, and that earlier application that was permitted, was actually permitted on the 20th of December 2016, was for 520 homes. So in total, that brings the total number of housing there to 1,205.
Okay. And there was no more retail, so the retail permission is 4,600?
Yeah, that's the total A1 to A5 users.
I'm sure that's, isn't that more than the figures that were referred to earlier on?
There was figures related solely, we were talking about yesterday, where just the A1.
Right, okay, yeah, not, yeah, okay.
It's, sorry, so it might be useful perhaps to verify the A1 specific floor space element.
Do you know that, or you're asking the council to? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't have that information to hand, unfortunately.
The, I mean, the application, the more recent application refers to just over 4,000 square metres of A1 use, but the convenience element of that is only those two units that we mentioned yesterday were of three, that's about 350 odd square metres each, so.
Okay.
So the proposal is a lot less in the new application coming forward than...
Yeah, I think my memory was, you were going to do a, well, even if you weren't going to, I think it would be useful to set that out quite clearly as a note, just explaining exactly what is A1, what is comparison, and what's been given permission. So does that mean there's no B1 use permitted? And does this cover, do these two permissions now cover the whole of Napier Park?
You're correct. Well, the latest two permissions don't include any B1 users. However, we still do have the original permission, the outline permission back from 2013, which was granted permission in 2015. So in theory, that outline permission could still be implemented. There are a few years left on that, and that does include B1 users. However, the area of land that that was meant to occupy is currently occupied by Vauxhall Motors. They recently re-acquired the land, and they're using it as a vehicle release facility, which is effectively a car park for new vehicles before they go out. It must be said that we aren't entirely sure on the legality of their operations there, and that may be challenged in the future.
Okay. So if you're looking at the two permissions and the site that's now operated by Vauxhall, that covers all of Napier Park?
That's correct.
And I suppose if there's going to be then any employment use, that will be looked at on the Vauxhall site, the future of which is uncertain. I mean, is that as Vauxhall, do you know if Vauxhall is intending that's permanent use, or?
I don't know.
No, okay. Well, with all that in mind, I just want to go through the individual uses. And I suppose my first question before that, though, is how flexible or how prescriptive is the policy intended to be, given it talks about 600 units, but you've allowed 1,200, and it talks about 2,500 square metres of food store, and I'm not sure how that fits in with the 4,600 you've granted. So what was the intention?
I think in the, so the, in formulating the policy, there's a kind of chain, I suppose, to refer to. One is the existing excellent local plan, has a strategic allocation for Napier Park already, which recognise the fact that there was a key regeneration opportunity in the town. And then in terms of the new emerging plan, over the cycle of preparing it, there were discussions with the owners about the potential range of uses that were on the site, and obviously proposals started to emerge prior to the planning consents. And so the policy's reflecting pretty much what was coming through the planning application process. In terms of the quota, for, in particular for the business issues, the employment land review reflected what was potentially coming forward on Napier Park in terms of the overall need for B1 office space. So recognising it was going to make a significant contribution. In terms of the housing, that's come through the schmarr process.
Yeah, which has been formed by the planning applications, the activity.
Okay. So, but given the reality of what's happened, does that, is that policy still correct? I think anyway, you're going to look at housing, weren't you, in terms of, because of your latest schmarr, you're going to look at amending all the numbers, weren't you?
I think that's, that's the key point, really, is that it's a moving feast, and perhaps we do need a little bit more flexibility in the policy in terms of how it's phrased, by taking out specific reference to the numbers, except for the, obviously the dwelling.
I suppose that was my board question, because if you're constantly writing a policy that's trying to reflect the last planning permission, then that could be an endless cycle, couldn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, let's go through the uses, and then at the end, come to a view as to what maybe should say in terms of them. For employment, it's very precise, both in terms of the quantity, but also that it should be B1A and B1C. So there's no, there's no B1B research and development included. And I think you've told me that that's because you want that kind of used to go to Butterfield, but is that just over restrictive, or is that something you still hold to?
The policy doesn't exclude B1 users on the site. And if they were to come forward and be appropriate, somebody thought that there wouldn't be an impact on Butterfield, on Butterfield Green Technology Park, then that could be broadly seen to be acceptable within this policy.
But in reality, if someone came along with a B1B proposal, or a speculative development that included any B1 in it, how would you actually assess whether that would be harmful to Butterfield or not? I suppose I'm just wondering.
That's a valid point. I imagine these would be under through pre-application discussions of where location is, and the ability of the council to negotiate with developers prior to applications.
I suppose my question is, is it just being too restrictive in reality? Should it just refer to B1 users? Or B1 users with an emphasis on B1A and C?
Yeah, I think, I think we'd agree with that, sir, because it obviously clearly is creating some kind of uncertainty and confusion, so.
So how would it be worded? It would say B1 users. And would you want with an emphasis on A and C?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're just going to suggest that we've used wording elsewhere, which is to have particular support for B1 users.
So it would, you'd be content for it just to refer to B1 users being supported, full stop, with no distinction?
This may be thinking out loud, and again, I'll be corrected if I need to be from further down the line. But we've used the formulation of giving particular support to certain elements of use classes before. And it may be that that's a clearer way of expressing the policy imperative here, so that there would still be references to B1A and B1C, but in the context of them being offered particular support, so that it's perhaps clearer that it's not excluding uses that might fall outside.
So the wording would be B1 users with particular support to B1A and B1C? Something like that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. And what about the specific quantities that are listed there? Thirty five thousand and twenty thousand?
Well, that's, that's the point we were talking about earlier. I think the quantity figure should be taken out of the policy.
Okay. Shall I leave you to come in if you want to make a specific comment on anything?
Yes, please, yes.
So I won't necessarily ask you questions unless I think I really want to, but you shout if you want to. Same with Historic England.
I don't think we've got anything to say on that, man.
Okay. Okay, then the other issue is B2 general industry, because I think there's, policy B2 and LP 13 don't quite say the same thing. LP eight only refers to B1. LP 13 talks about B1 and small scale affordable B2 use. So the plan's saying two different things, depending on where you look at it.
I think there needs to be consistency, obviously, between the two policy approaches. And the preference would be that LP eight reflects the, again, it's a similar kind of preference for if there's going to be some B2 site because of the amenity issues, but it needs to be small scale. But the key need that it's trying to address is that there's, apart from Century Park, there's very little other allocations coming forward to meet any B2 needs for affordable B2 accommodation. So it's trying to address that need.
So are you suggesting adding something to LP eight to say B2 users will be acceptable? Sorry, no, no, it's all right. I'll ask a question again. Are you then saying you should add a criteria to LP eight to say B2 users will be acceptable with something about scale, location and protecting living conditions of residents?
And affordable accommodation.
Small scale, affordable.
Affordable accommodation.
What do you mean by affordable? Isn't any... Isn't any, is it expensive accommodation?
Yeah, the employment land reviews identified that there's a significant high occupancy level in existing older stock, which tends to attract lower rents, and that's serving a need within, within the borough in terms of some of the local businesses that can't afford perhaps more the higher-end, modernised industrial stock, so this is really trying to address that point, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of just clarify that in our matters.
Yeah.
Sorry, in our matter statement, what I'm saying doesn't accord with the approach that we suggested initially in our matter statement, which was to delete the reference from LP.
Sorry, say again, sorry, just start with that sentence again.
Yeah, sorry, the, our matter statement said that the preferred approach would be to delete the reference of B2 from LP13. What I'm saying now is
The opposite.
untrue to that.
Yes.
Saying that I think actually the best approach is to address this in LP8.
Okay.
By making a reference to it.
So the reference would be small-scale affordable B8 users, provided they protect the living conditions of residents?
Yeah. Sorry, B2.
Okay. I've just got a note from Louise to say, Louise, it's, it's just about Capital and Regional's participation. Have you, have you, I'll just deal with this now, perhaps, yeah. Are you able to pop over? It might be easier if Louise explains rather than me paraphrase her note to me. Well, I didn't say that. I can read it. So anyway, Capital and Regional have been in touch.
No, Barton and Wilmor have been in touch.
Barton and Wilmor have been in touch, yes. For Capital and Regional, yes.
Yeah, for Capital and Regional, on the matter of the park. Said that, owing to the fact that the input that they've had this week and the extensive representations they've made, that they are happy to rely on their written representations for matter 27.
Right.
So they won't be participating this afternoon.
Okay, okay. Right. Thank you. So, in fact, we can run through, I think, and they were the only other participants.
They were the only other participants, so I'll put a note put on the website saying that matter 27 is going to follow as soon as we finish this morning.
Okay, that's fine. Right. Useful to do that now. The other issue is about B8 storage and distribution. I think you said that might help investment, but there are amenity concerns, presumably what Vauxhall are doing is a B8 use, isn't it, at the moment?
That's correct.
So what's your position on B8 use on the site? Is it something you actively want to support, or? Or not?
So the, given the nature of the overall concept for Napier Park and the intent there to, to create and serve a new community that would come forward, the idea initially was to obviously have a mix of uses that would allow for employment, but also retail. In terms of Vauxhall's re-acquisition of the land, that's obviously intent in serving the existing business, a significant and important business for the town, and how they address the transport movers in terms of HGVs from the B8 side of things is obviously something within their existing operations. In terms of the new, the new scheme coming forward, we wouldn't want to see B8 uses impacting on the amenity of the new community and the new uses coming forward. So we would want to try and restrict B8.
So you're not really seeking B8 on that?
No.
It's not, in your view, part of the mix? If it comes along, you'll consider it on its merits?
There are more, that LP13, you know, leads to the more appropriate locations for B8 across the town, where they relate well to the strategic road network.
Okay, thank you. Housing we've covered to a degree, I think you've said now, well, it was part of the schmarr work, wasn't it? And that seems to be confirmed by the planning permission that the numbers, the capacity has gone up, so that presumably needs to be reflected in the policy, and that was, you were going to do that as a comprehensive exercise, anyway. Okay, I think you've told me the hotel is justified by the hotel study, and obviously that's got permission now, so I haven't got any questions about that. In terms of retail use, the policy talks about a food store of 2,500 square metres, when obviously the permission's been given for something different to that, hasn't it? So what should the policy say, should someone come, to guide someone who might come back with a revised application in future, what, what is the council seeking really on this site?
What we're really seeking is for a level of retail provision to support that, the new development there, and the thousands, well, now thousands of new dwellings that will be placed up there. So we're looking for a level of retail to, to support those people.
The, the retail study, sir, 2012, and updated in 2015, in relation to the role of Napier Park, did urge some caution about the scale of retail there, because of the issues about the sequential approach and impact. And I think it was recognising that, the argument was that a new community would be created there, and that would be in keeping with the spatial approach across the town for neighbouring district centres, so potentially Napier Park becoming a neighbourhood centre, which is in, in our policy approach. So, you know, the scale of retail would have to be of the lower order, so.
Does the policy actually have to name a specific figure, or would it be better if the policy just said convenience, retail, serving local needs?
That would add, I think that would adequately cover the issue.
Because it seems to me you're just getting different permissions with different amounts coming in each time.
Or just tied down to.
You know, how.
I think it's a change.
Okay. So really, then, we've covered the number of dwellings, or we've covered the dwellings. So presumably it would say around X number of dwellings. We've talked about the B1 space, we've talked about B2, we've talked about retail, and we've talked about hotels, so I think you know what you're, you're doing. Okay, great. Was there anything you wanted to comment on?
I think you've actually covered everything.
All right, okay, good. I think that then covers question two. I think my question three was about the effect of Vauxhall having re-acquired the site, and I think we discussed that at stage two, didn't we, where the conclusion was, well, for the moment, that reduces the potential to provide employment uses.
It does, and so it, if anything, it places more pressure on the remaining Junction 10A allocation for B1 uses. We've also got the, as we discussed yesterday about Butterfield, the potential for reduced B1 provision in Butterfield itself, if it's replaced by B8 in certain parts of that scheme. So in that instance, that's a reflection of what the market signals are saying about that particular site and its location, and its attractiveness to the market being a bit more mixed from B1 to the B8 element. So you may well conclude that the significance of B1 loss there isn't as great as it is at Napier Park. So in terms of Napier Park, as I said, the Junction 10A is actually under more, more of the microscope in terms of what we could do to try and address that, that gap, but I think in the corollary of all this is that in terms of an early review, we would want to pick that up as part of that early review.
No, so.
And that we're doing the, the functional economic market assessment as well, which is addressing the issue about cross-boundary.
Was that an item we'd previously discussed as being listed in the early review? Your, your early review's now going to be everything, isn't it, anyway?
Well, we're faced with that situation, sir, as an emergent issue during the plan preparation process of a.
So that would be employment needs and provision.
So, so sorry, just to perhaps add a little more on that, as we've gone through the examination sessions, it's become clear that there's at least a prospect that main modifications will be required, so there is a review policy, and we've discussed the parameters of the review policy. When the local authority takes up the review, of course, it may be that it is its own judgement there are additional issues at that stage, that it's appropriate to deal with. And I think this discussion falls into that category, so we're not suggesting that a main modification is required so that the review policy also picks up things like Butterfield, but it just may naturally fall into the mix when we get to that point in time.
Presumably out of looking at housing capacity for instance.
Indeed, yes.
Okay, so. Okay, in question four, I asked about the requirement for a master plan. I've seen your answer, I mean, I suppose I could accept that things have moved on and there are, that there are permissions, but presumably that could still be relevant in the sense that someone might come back with a totally different scheme in the, in the future.
That's correct, I think that's the basis, sir, that we've seen that already between two permissions with different mixes of, of scale of these.
Okay, question five is about the neighbourhood centre, I think we've covered that, so that takes me through everything I wanted to cover on Napier Park. So it's a football club, you've covered everything you wanted to, or you've had it covered?
We, we welcome Napier Park coming forward, so.
Okay. Right, let's move on then to High Town policy LP10. My first question really was about how the 750 units and the 350 jobs has been arrived at, because in a way, this isn't an allocation in the sense of a cleared area of land, is it? It's a, it's a, it's a definable area with its own existing character that happens to have some opportunities and vacant or underused sites within it. Is that a fair way of categorising it?
Yes, sir, I think it is, and of course, we have prepared the master plan for High Town over the last couple of years, so in a sense, there's a lot of detailed work that's gone in and gone on in the area, and the sort of the, the, that work has been in the context of the existing local plan and the emerging local plan policy. So the, the SPD we consider is, is essentially in line with the emerging policy, and the quantum of development is also sort of reflective of the work that's been carried out on the master plan.
Okay.
I mean, I think if you, if you actually compared the sort of the exact capacities of one compared to the latest schmarr work, there'd be a slight discrepancy because of changes happening, but there's nothing sort of, I think, that we would regard as.
There's no fundamental change to the number of units.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, I think some, there was a discussion about a couple of, or at least one site, wasn't there, here?
Yeah.
The big garage site, was there, is, were you proposing any change to the 750 number?
We weren't proposing to, and because only a few months ago, we adopted the master planner's supplementary planning document, which includes those, those numbers, so I think the position we would say is there's no material change to those numbers, so it, it basically makes it easier, I think, to leave the numbers as they are.
That's fine. Right, well, while we're talking about the master plan, so the policy refers to a master plan, SPD and delivery strategy, are they in effect the same document?
Yes, yeah, it was, it was the same document, and we've now shortened the title just to the High Town Master Plan.
Okay, so how was that prepared? Was that through consultation?
Yeah, there was, there was sort of extensive local consultations, sir. I think in, there were sort of three elements to it. It was a master plan where the work was, was led by consultants, and there were, I think, three bouts of consultation locally, which led to the, the final draft version, as it were, of the master plan, which was dated January 2016, I believe. And then what we did was that we then subjected that to one further round of sort of more formal consultation, where we specifically, and we didn't get a very large response to that, I think because of the, the earlier consultation rounds, but in, in particular, we wanted to consult with our colleagues at Historic England, and they made a number of comments on the master plan, as they've made several comments on the local plan policy, and I think what we've tried to do is to basically adopt those in, in their entirety, both in the, the master plan, but also in the emerging policy LP10.
Okay, so that, that was clearly then a master plan or SPD process, rather than a, you chose not to do it as an area action.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Then, I suppose you'll know what's coming from my, from my question is, I suppose my concern is with criteria A, really, saying that so boldly, proposals must have regard to the master plan, so I suppose the question is, is the, is the effect of, you know, the, the regulations, although they're not particularly easy to trawl through, I think when you look at them carefully and think about them several times, they're quite clear that really development management and site allocation policies have to be in the plan, that they can't be relegated to an SPD. And I suppose my concern is that if you have a policy in the plan which says, in effect, comply with the policies in a master plan, you're lifting that master plan up and trying to give it the status
Yeah.
of a policy, but without it having been tested through the required process, this kind of process. I don't want to be too heavy-handed about that, but I, I think.
And we, and, and so I think we would, we recognise the point that you're making, and on page four of our statement on LP10, we suggest a slight change in the wording, so that, suggesting that proposals have regard to the more detailed guidance in the High Town Master Plan, SPD, to try and reflect the concern that you were making.
So are you suggesting any change to the?
We also suggest change to the supporting text to the policy as well, which is on page three, which is really, I think, an updating
Yeah, okay.
of, of basically the position, to reflect what is the current position, but also then try and make the point, or try and address the point, the substantive point that you were making, in the sense that the master plan is consistent with the local plan policy, and setting out more detail from that local plan policy.
Yeah, it's still. So the only change really is to have regard to the detailed guidance in the master plan.
Which I'm not quite sure that goes far enough, really.
I think the, the idea certainly behind the revised text is to ensure that the principle of the allocation and the main requirements of the allocation are set out in policy terms themselves, but as I understand the master plan, it does go quite a bit further in terms of more detailed requirements, and so it, it is, if one imagines, but let's assume for a second that the contents of the master plan are all entirely consistent with the overarching aims of the allocation here, and that they all command public support and so on, as, as they may well do through the consultation.
And I'm not questioning that.
No, but then, then the question is, should a mechanism be provided so that further appropriate levels of detail, which, bearing in mind the guidance on providing relatively concise plans and so on, you wouldn't want to factor in, in their entirety into the local plan itself, should there be a sufficient mechanism for essentially cross-referring?
I suppose in crude terms, my understanding would be. I suppose in crude terms, my understanding would be the policy would set, if you like, broad principles of what's to be achieved. So for instance, an obvious example here might be permeability.
Yes.
And then what supporting text would say, we have produced detailed guidance to show how this could be achieved, rather than the policy requiring people to comply with the master plan.
So, but, but that, in the formal analysis, is a difference of language. Because it's seeking to incorporate what may well, as I say, have, have been adequately subject to public consultation.
Your plan into line with the, with the regulations, I would say. And then, and also, it takes away from me the issue of whether, because if you've got an SPD or a master plan, you apply that as a matter for you and whether you comply with the regulations or not, and whether it complies with the regulations in how you deal with it. And that would remove it from my consideration because it, it, see what I'm getting at, you're almost putting the master plan in front of me to say whether it's appropriate by saying you must comply with it in a policy.
Yeah.
And I don't want to do that.
No, I, I think we, we see the issue, we've tried to address it, so you, you have a continuing concern about it.
Yeah.
And so I suspect the way to, to go about it is, is for us to go away and try and come up with a form of words that.
I mean, it may not need very much attention in the sense that what I was, what I would suggest is you delete reference to the SPD and the master plan in the policy unless it's retained merely as a factual reference that, that it exists. But then saying a, set out what the principles are of what you're wanting to, development proposals to contribute to or to achieve. So that might be permeability or, I don't know how easy it would be to do that, I'm not.
Yeah, I think the, the intention of the alteration we, we made was really to try and signpost what we're, what the, the signpost is at the very start of the wording there perhaps.
Well, I think the, the problem I have is it, it doesn't really alter it very much because it, it says must have regard to the detailed guidance in the master plan to help deliver the vision of the area. This will be achieved through the site specific requirements. And I'm presuming that can only be a reference to the master plan's site specific requirements.
So I, I understand the, the concern that you have and I, I think it is for us to try and redraft the policy in a way that embraces the principles that we want to see applied. But then perhaps at most has a reference to the master plan as supplying that detail, perhaps within the text.
The master plan explains how this can be achieved, I think.
Yes.
Is that okay?
That's helpful, thank you.
See, I suppose the alternative is if we wanted the master plan to apply, it could have been prepared as an area action plan, for instance.
Yes.
It's okay, we've got that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Right, and then my question three was about heritage assets and the council, you've advanced one of your minor modifications, MOD 24, which is to amend the wording, and was that agreed with Historic England, is that?
Thank you, certainly this is, was in response to our concern. Our principal concern being that the pre-submission plan just talked about protecting the historical environment rather than going as far as to say enhance, which is a statutory duty. And therefore that was the key wording that we needed in the policy. We're pleased to see that the minor modification includes that, although I suspect that may need to be a main modification given it's a policy.
If it's to the policy, I think it's the main.
However, I just wonder whether the wording would be better if that clause were moved to the end of that paragraph, because where it's positioned now is really where you should be listing what you include as the mixed use, so it's a residential mixed use development, including small scale offices, it's, it's the list of what you're including in your mixed use. If you remove the whilst protecting the historical environment and asset, sorry, let me use the new wording, whilst protecting and enhancing the historic environment and heritage assets to the end of the sentence after natural environment, then I think it reads better.
It's almost a separate point, isn't it really?
Exactly. And it, it just, rather than splitting the mixed use development and your small scale offices and things which are part of your mixed use development, it, it just makes greater sense. But broadly, we welcome the wording, just position it elsewhere.
Protect and enhance, would it be better to say protect and take opportunities to enhance? Isn't protect and enhance going beyond the statutory duties relating to heritage assets, given that preserve is accepted enough? Or are we suggesting council should be aspirational here?
I think we're dealing with a conservation area that's at risk. I think we see this as a, a major opportunity and I think we would seek aspirational measures here, so that's why we're suggesting that wording.
It, it, it's, just my experience of this comes is the difficulty when councils and seek to make development and management decisions on individual proposals which everyone accepts quite happily. For instance, preserve the character and appearance of a conservation area but don't enhance it. And then someone says, but the policy here says protect and enhance, so you've not complied with the policy, but you've complied with national guidance. And inspectors end up trying to filter their way through that conundrum at, at appeals. I just wonder whether they ought to be protect and take opportunities.
Just one point on this, if I may, sir, is that in relation to the delivery group that we have, which is essentially a corporate delivery group within the council, but we have also invited Historic England to be part and parcel of that. And they have agreed to that, so perhaps that adds weight to the, the idea of achieving aspirations.
I, I suppose my question is just how do you apply it on a day to day level? Will that give you, will that give your development management colleagues difficulties?
You might be able to put a, a, a new phrase of words that talk about enhancing the areas that are leading to the area being at risk. So we need to address those areas that are bringing the area down. Other than necessarily those areas that are already good quality and therefore don't need enhancing.
Okay, given I exhausted myself yesterday trying to work out the detailed policies on Butterfield, is there a better way for you to go away and consider it, perhaps talk with Historic England about?
I mean, I think in principle, we're, we're happy with the suggestion to sort of change the ordering of the policy and we could liaise with Historic England on, on the actual words.
Okay, that's probably the best.
Content with that.
Thank you.
Friends of the Earth told me that space ought to be found for a green orchard and recreation area, which was, has been shown in the past, is that something that's in the master plan or?
That's been considered as part of the master plan process, yes. I think it's a longstanding aspiration in the area.
Yeah, so does the master plan include anything on that?
The saved design codes include elements of orchards and green tree provision.
Yeah, so are there any proposals as such for open space in High Town?
Through the master plan, there are proposals for new small areas of open space. Public squares as well, yeah.
So how would those come forward, would those come forward through, on the back, if you like, of?
Of development, as they, as they emerge, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That covered everything I wanted to on High Town, is there anything else? Okay. So move on to Creative Quarter. So again, this is a bit like High Town, isn't it, in the sense that it's not a cleared site, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a specific area of Luton that's already got things in it. But there are some, presumably some development opportunities in terms of vacant or underused sites. I suppose my same question, how did you arrive at the around 600 residential units and is that still relevant based on the, the Tishla work?
Good morning, sir. I think one of the matters that we covered off in our, one of our examination documents, EDO 73, but, I mean, essentially the, the position is the same as High Town in terms of the area comprising a number of sites within the schlar. And the difference being that of the around 600 units, at least 375 of those come from a single site. So there has been minor variation, I think, in our latest schlar, but it's less so than in the case of High Town, there's been less recent application activity on those sites. So really the number's more derived from the consistent assumptions in the schlar, so there hasn't been much flux in those numbers at all really in the recent updates, but it's the same process. Mixed use area comprising a number of locations.
Okay. And in terms of retail needs, we've already touched upon the Northern Gateway site, which I think reading the policy in paragraph 4.110, is it 4.110? It's, it's seen as the main site for town centre comparison retail, isn't it, apart from Power Court?
That's correct, sir, it's the, Power Court obviously was the key regeneration scheme which would offer a sizable site to accommodate retail needs, but in terms of the comparison element, as we, I think we said previously in talking about Power Court, there wasn't a figure given for comparison because of the nature of the other potential scheme at the Northern Gateway and that that would be equally suitable. And in terms of this ecological approach as well for updating.
We'll have a discussion on the next matter about a point that the Football Club has made, which is about that the plan is seeking to cap retail development and whether that in effect equates to a needs test, I think that's not what it made, isn't it? And I wonder if that same argument in effect applies to the final sentence of 4.110 in that it talks about Northern Gateway provision for convenience and comparison limited to ensure floor space for the town centre is not exceeded. And I suppose the point is if this is a sequentially compliant site, is there any need for, is that in effect setting up a needs test?
It isn't intended to, to do that, it's what, what the restricted, restrictive element is doing is recognising that there's more certainty, as we talked about the period to 2025 and the retail figures. And across the retail hierarchy, regard has to be had to the, the objectively identified need for retail. And that's, that's the only purpose of it, so that the scale is appropriate to each centre. So that's, that's the intention, so.
Isn't introducing a new needs test? Okay, perhaps leave that one there because we'll have a substantive discussion about that point this afternoon, but then depending on what we conclude, you may or may not need to go back and look at all the consequential issues. Okay, and then the policy, you've got the, okay, my question two now. Three areas are defined, aren't they, Northern Gateway, Station Gateway and north of St George's Square. So are those in effect the main development opportunities?
They are the key site opportunities that are part of the mosaic of the Creative Quarter.
Okay, and could you just take me through each one, telling me what the current position is broadly, is it a cleared site or does it contain existing users? What's the state of play?
The north of St George's Square is also known as the gap site, sir, which is in the extent local plan, it's identified. That is, it's just a bit of, it is, well, it is what it says, it's a gap between the former Menzies Hotel and the library. And really it's just had some parking and across it, but it also crosses on, that it covers the culverted River Lee at that point as well. But there's no clearance or, or development on that site at the moment.
No, so there's some buildings on it, aren't there, I think, is that right?
Well, the gap is between the, you know, between the library and the, the former hotel. Directly above the revamped St George's Square.
Yeah.
Quite a key site in terms of the environment of the town centre.
So when I say there's buildings on it, I'm just looking at the line drawn around it on your town centre inset map.
Make sure that we're talking, referring to the same site, sir. So this might help if I, if I just show and indicate on the town centre inset map. So the, the gap site, sir, in terms of the extent local plan, is a smaller area between the library the former hotel, just north of St George's Square. And in terms of formulating the, the site allocation, the Creative Quarter, which is numbered three, that entails an additional area of land, which is the former car park, which was demolished, and that, that is now a surface level car park, so.
Yeah, so it does include a mix of car park and buildings, okay. That's fine, and there's no current proposals to develop it?
Then, so the Northern Gateway site, which is immediately abutting the Mall, to the north of the Mall, includes a former car parking area, which I think still is in car parking use. But is the sort of prime sort of area that's indicated for potential expansion of the Mall, sir. And it also includes some further potential buildings that are in obviously the conservation area, so there's sensitivity about, you know, the potential reuse of land in that area to.
Okay, so, so is the idea then that if it was, again, that's a retail led mixed use scheme, isn't it?
Yeah.
Proposal, presumably that, that would connect into the two entrances to the Mall?
The Mall, that's correct.
And any current position on planning applications or development permissions?
There's no current application, I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. And then number two, Station Gateway?
Two, Station Gateway, which is the largest single site identified. That's station owned land, but also cleared car park as well in this area. So quite a substantial site just to the south of the railway corridor.
Okay, and that was primarily for housing, isn't it?
That's primarily for housing, but there is a retail element included within that, so.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Sir, sorry, if I could just say that from the club in 2020. Sorry, if I could just say that from the club in 2020, we're just looking to reserve our position until we've seen the breakdown. I think it was discussed yesterday to understand the densities and...
Yes, that's right. That's the note that the council was going to do, wasn't it? That was going to be circulated for comment, I recall.
Yes, sir. And that note also would refer to some other potential sites and opportunities in the area and clarify what they are.
Okay, that's fine. What was it? Remind me the timescale for that, was that?
Was it just two weeks?
Next week for you and the week after for?
It's my reference.
Football Club and Capital Regional, okay. Right, question three. Does the policy adequately affect the potential impacts on heritage asset, including within the Northern Gateway? Perhaps the easiest thing is to ask Historic England to tell us what they think's wrong because you've, in a way, got a slightly complex mix of things to get across, haven't you?
Thank you. First of all, we'd like to say we broadly welcome regeneration of this area. It's an important strategic site in Luton. And given the heritage interest, it would be a really encouraging thing to see that site come forward and...
This is Northern Gateway?
Yeah. The area as a whole, the Platters Lee Conservation Area, which covers over half of that site, is a conservation area on our at-risk register. And we see that this is an opportunity to positively tackle the reasons for it being at risk through the overall regeneration and development of the Creative Quarter. So broadly speaking, we welcome change in this area. However, we have got a number of concerns, as you've mentioned. I think there are four principal concerns. One relates to the policy as a whole. And whilst some of the supporting text and policy contain some useful references to the historic environment, we consider that there should be reference as well to the production of a conservation area appraisal and management plan, something which we've recommended on a number of occasions in our representations to you over the years. We think it would be best included after the first paragraph of Policy LP 11.
That would be for the council to prepare, wouldn't it?
That's right, because Historic England themselves have prepared some assessment of the conservation area. And I think that's been referred to in both the plan and also in the council's hearing statement. And we welcome that, but the council themselves need to prepare a comprehensive appraisal of the conservation area.
Is the plan unsound if it doesn't say the council will do that?
I think paragraph 126 of the MPPF makes it very clear that a positive strategy should be, for the historic environment should be made. And I think that includes addressing issues such as conservation areas at risk. And I think without properly addressing this conservation area at risk, then we would consider the plan to be unsound. We've suggested some wording, which you'll find in our hearing statement, have a possible paragraph to insert.
Sorry, which paragraph did you refer to in the framework?
It was paragraph 126 in terms of a positive strategy for the conservation injury in the historic environment.
Okay, so council, do you have any concerns about committing to produce a conservation area appraisal for your at-risk conservation area that you're intending to see comprehensively redeveloped?
No, we don't, sir. We don't have any reservations about that at all. We do have resources to do that and it is one of the work streams that we're trying to progress. And I would draw your attention to Policy LP 30 and the, on page 86 of the submitted plan, where it says the council will seek to maintain and regularly update the schedule of Luton's designated heritage assets and locally listed heritage, ensure that heritage assets considered to be at risk of neglect or decay included in the English Heritage at Risk Register are effectively managed and protected, and work with stakeholders and the community to establish conservation area appraisals and management plans for its conservation areas. And that's always been...
You're saying it's already there in effect?
That's what I'm saying, sir. I mean, I do agree that in principle, you know, we need to make sure that the issue's covered, but it is covered in the plan, if you read it as a whole.
Does that satisfy Historic England?
I think we consider that, given that this is a policy specifically relating to the Creative Quarter, specifically relating to Platters Lee, we'd prefer to see it in there.
Are you saying really this is a bit of a priority? If the council's going to do any appraisals, this should be the one?
I think that's right.
We can have a look at the wording. There is obviously a reference in the policy already to the heritage issue that we could probably make it clearer about.
In terms of a change, it would just be adding something to say the council will prepare a conservation area appraisal, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Our next three points relate just really to the Northern Gateway, that area we were just looking at. So there are three points we'd like to make in that regard. First of all, I noticed that it talks about complementing and respecting the proximity of the Platters Lee Conservation Area. That's in criterion B3. Given that the whole of the Northern Gateway lies within the Platters Lee Conservation Area, it would seem to me to say that its proximity to the Platters Lee Conservation Area is misleading when it's completely within...
Probably just wrong, isn't it? Putting it bluntly.
So that's the first of our points.
So the county presumably happy with...
We're happy with that.
And I think owing to that significance, we've recommended some wording to go at the end of the first paragraph, which seeks to, the first paragraph's talking about it being a retail-led comprehensive scheme, which we understand that's one of your priorities as for retail. We heard those discussions yesterday. But given the fact that it is in, within, completely within the conservation area, we would like to see that being a heritage-led regeneration scheme. And so we've suggested some wording to that effect. So it would say, owing to the significance and value of the historic fabric within the Platters Lee Conservation Area, a heritage-led approach to the development of the Northern Gateway is required.
Okay, how does council respond to that? Is that, well, perhaps first, is that, I mean, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but in terms of heritage assets and a development scheme that involves heritage assets or is close to them or might affect them, the correct approach would be to, first of all, identify the significance of those assets and the effect of proposals on them. And in doing that, presumably seek to preserve or enhance the significance of those assets. So the council presumably to comply with the framework after or developer would have to do that. Are you seeking something different through seeking something that's heritage-led?
I think it's recognising the important role that heritage can play in regeneration. And given that we are within a conservation area at risk, then we feel that rather than it being a solely retail-led scheme, that we should mention to flag up to developers that it needs to have substantial regard to the historic fabric and hence be heritage-led.
Is that very different from what I suggested in practice?
I think we're genuinely seeking wording within the policy to make it clear, rather than leading that to chance.
Just before you come, I think you'd also made a point about the need to assess the significance of the assets. Did you mention, was that something you mentioned? Maybe it was something I dreamt up? Maybe not. Maybe it was my thought. Let me give the council a chance to respond to that.
So we're sympathetic with the intent, but in terms of the way development happens and in terms of the viability of development, you know, the thrust of the policy is trying to nod to the fact that we depend on developments to be viable to bring them forward. We think there's enough in the policy, sir, to respect the other objectives of that area to ensure that the conservation area and the assets that are there are conserved and enhanced, sir.
In terms of heritage assets, I mean, obviously it's part of a conservation area which is in itself a heritage asset. What's the specific attributes of that part of the site? And are there any...
I think it is fair to say that it is a largely vacant site. However, it does lie within the conservation area. There are two buildings within the site, I believe, 49 and 51 Cheap Side, which make a positive contribution to the significance of the conservation area.
They're not listed?
No. 53 Cheap Side, which is immediately adjacent to, is grade two listed. 49 Cheap Side is on the council's draft local list, I understand.
Okay. So they're heritage assets but not designated heritage assets, except through falling within the conservation area?
However, they do make a positive contribution to the significance of the area as a whole. And I think at the moment, leading on to my next point, it is unclear really as to, there's uncertainty regarding the future use of those two buildings and their survival. And it could lead to their loss, which would be to the detriment of the conservation area as a whole. And that is why we were suggesting specific mention of those buildings within criterion B3. We suggested that it should be amended to read while also conserving and enhancing Platters Lee Conservation Area. So rather than the proximity of the conservation area, the point we made earlier, so we're accepting that it is solely within that. And then we have added an additional sentence to say, numbers 49 and 51 Cheap Side, which make a positive contribution to the significance of the conservation area, should be retained and incorporated into new development.
I mean, would it be the case anyway that if your argument is correct about the value of those buildings, that to remove them as part of a mixed-use scheme would fail to preserve the character of an appearance of the conservation area anyway?
Yes.
But you're looking for recognition of that in the policy?
I think so.
Okay, council's response to that?
Sir, our view is that the policy approach we have there is gives sufficient safeguards, sir, and that through the development management process and the other policies in the plan, adequate treatment and potential will be given to those kinds of issues, sir.
A goal I'd add, sir, is it has to be true about the, obviously how the assets adjoining the Northern Gateway area are shown on the policies map, it has to be true in the sense that they have heritage value. I suppose I agree with Mr. Rowan. It's looking at how that situation would be handled with in a standard development management scenario for those assets in terms of sort of the optimum viable use context. Obviously, no one would seek the loss of those assets, but in the event that there was a risk that they would be lost, you would deal with that in a different way in the framework. I think this policy is robust enough to ensure that it's taken into account, but it could risk becoming...
You're going to need to slightly redraft three anyway, aren't you, the reference to that? I wonder if this kind of, I can thread a path between you, probably make neither of you happy.
I think...
Is it, well, what I was going to suggest was, is it, could there be wording which says, you know, which reflects this is in a conservation area and it is at risk? And in that context, replace part of three with something that says, first of all, require proposals to, require proposals or applications to be accompanied by an assessment of the significance of heritage assets and how they might be affected, which I think reflects the framework broadly. And then seek to preserve the significance of those heritage assets and take opportunities to enhance them. And then explain in supplementary text briefly what the assets are, i.e. the conservation area and the potentially the buildings at 49 and 51. How does that sound? And my thinking there is that any reasonable assessment of the significance of heritage assets ought to pick up what's there as a starting point.
I think one would hope so. I think I'd refer you again back to paragraph 157 of the MPPF. It makes it very clear that site allocations should provide sufficient detail for clarity for developers. And I think that was all we were trying to put within the amendment.
Does my suggestion strike in council?
So again, I think in terms of the proposed alterations to the main policy, we'd be entirely content with those. They follow national guidance, as it appears to us. I query the appropriateness of identifying specific assets within the text when, I'm not sure we can confidently say that we think that those assets are of such value that they should be individually identified in a way that other assets haven't been through the text of the plan.
Okay, so you're saying they would be, get picked up by an assessment of...
In any event.
Okay. I think I'm going to suggest then that you amend the policy...
Yes.
...I've suggested and leave it at that. Okay, that takes me through everything I wanted to cover on this allocation. Was there anything else? No? Okay. Which takes me then finally to Marsh Farm. But I've seen, I only asked one question, I've seen your response and I haven't got any further questions on that. Takes me through that session unless there's anything else. So quarter past 11, shall we take, should we take a break until 25 to 12 and come back then with the final matter of the day? Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Thank you all.